Let's call this meeting to order. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, can we have a roll call, please?
Hey, Mr. Pavoni.
Here.
Mr. Corman.
Here.
Mr. Prince.
Here.
Mr. Person.
Ms. Switchy.
Here.
Mr. McGurven.
Here.
Ms. Perez. Roll call, Mr. Mayor, two absent.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Prince.
I move we excuse the absent council members.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince and seconded by Mr. Corman that we excuse the absent council members. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, tonight we have a special presentation. Communities and Schools.
Is this my cue?
Yes.
It is.
Thank you so much for having me. Jay, thank you for inviting me. As the new ED of Communities and Schools of Renton, I'm constantly asked, what do you do? I have to admit, it's taken me quite some time to be able to articulate this, and it's still a work in progress, but it wasn't until my husband showed me a video that I realized that I was answering the question all wrong. I was focusing on the what, which were part of the nation's largest and most successful dropout prevention organization, and I was answering it with the how, that we work directly inside K through 12 schools to address the needs of students who face non-academic barriers to success. But what's most important is the why, which is our purpose, our cause, and why you should care. I'm gonna show you a video.
Hey, line up! Line up, everybody line up! We're about to race! Everybody line up! Shoulder to shoulder, take off your backpacks, basketball, line up, we're about to race! Hey, we are racing for a hundred dollar bill. The winner of this race will take this. It's a hundred dollar bill. Before I say go, I'm gonna make a couple statements. If those statements apply to you, I want you to take two steps forward. If those statements don't apply to you, I want you to stay right where you're at. Take two steps forward if both of your parents are still married. Take two steps forward if you grew up with a father figure in the home. Take two steps forward if you had access to a private education. Take two steps forward if you had access to a free tutor growing up. Take two steps forward if you've never had to worry about your cellphone being shut off. Take two steps forward if you've never had to help mom or dad with the bills. Take two steps forward if it wasn't because of your athletic ability you don't have to pay for college. Take two steps forward if you never wondered where your next meal was gonna come from. I want you guys up here in the front just to turn around and look. Every statement I've made has nothing to do with anything any of you have done, has nothing to do with decisions you've made. Everything I've said has nothing to do with what you've done. We all know these people over here have a better opportunity to win this hundred dollars. Does that mean these people back here can't race? No. We would be foolish to not realize we've been given more opportunity. We don't wanna recognize that we've been given a head start. But the reality is, we have. Now, there's no excuse. They still gotta run their race. You still gotta run your race.
So, for me, it's the students in the back. That's the why. For me, it's about equity and social justice. I hope I'm not gonna cry. My husband, he's like, "Don't cry tonight, don't cry tonight." I'm not gonna cry. So when young people face multiple barriers to learning and lack opportunities to grow, they start life steps behind and often fall further behind as they grow up. But it doesn't have to be that way. For over 22 years, we've been making measurable progress right here in Renton toward equal access and opportunities for success. We remove barriers and create opportunities that enable all students to reach their full potential. Of the 701 case-managed students we supported last year, 97 percent of them lived in poverty and 25 percent were homeless. Students are referred to us for a number of reasons, including issues related to poverty, physical, social, or mental health issues, family trauma, behavior challenges, or just in a need of a caring adult mentor. A plan is then created to connect these students to community resources, programs, and services to fulfill unmet needs. So now, when I'm asked, what do we do at CISR, I always start with the why. Driven by a belief that poverty should not be a predictor of success, we strive for equal educational opportunities, providing all students with the unique supports they need to succeed. Bottom line is, we focus on equity. The urgency of our mission is amplified today by the changing demographics, a widening economic gap, and a growing body of research that directly links inequality with negative outcomes for both the individual and society. There has never been a more important time to invest in these young people, removing the barriers and creating opportunities that enable all students to reach their full potential. It's not the job of a single individual, an organization, program, or school. Addressing inequity is our collective moral, democratic, and economic interest. It is a shared responsibility, and we intend to lead by example. There are far too many students still starting the race while behind their peers, so we must wrap our arms around them and bring them to the same starting line as the rest. Therefore, at CISR, we are working to create the next generation. We are focused 100 percent on impact expansion. We're currently going through an in-depth, five-month strategic planning process, which is focused on capacity building. So I'll close with this. As an organization rooted in equity, we look ahead to a time when, thanks to our work and the work of others like us, at-risk students have the same opportunities to unlock their potential as their peers. We aspire to a time when every student, regardless of their circumstance, has a community of support, both inside and outside the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Great presentation.
Just say, as Jamie's coming back up here, but there are opportunities for mentors. We always are looking for people who are interested to become a caring adult role model for kids, and there are opportunities to serve on the board and serve on committees with CIS. So there's lots of opportunities for people in the community that may be interested in helping. And for those of you that have participated, you know the rewards of working with one of these kids is absolutely amazing. You will gain so much more than you give in enjoying the relationship and association with some of these kids. They're phenomenal, and it's a great organization. We really appreciate, and as Jamie said, the city's been involved, directly involved for over 22 years with CIS and along with the school district. So it's been a great relationship, and we've done some really outstanding things, and we just need to do more.
Yes, I've been a mentor for the last three years, and I know they're always looking for more male mentors, so I know that's important, so thank you. All right, we're on to administrative report.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, a couple of items I want to mention, especially tonight, when we have inclement weather, one of the things we worry about in November is that leaves will be blown from trees and end up in catch basins, and will clog those basins, which can cause localized flooding. So we just want to encourage folks to be aware in your neighborhoods. If you see a catch basin that needs to be swept out or raked out, if you can try to do that, that'll help you and your neighbors from avoiding some flooding or some other damage. Reminder that we are in the process of updating our bicycle trails and master plan. We've got another open house Thursday, November 28th, from 5:00 to 8:00 at our senior center, where folks can come and receive information and provide input. Our Solid Waste Utility is hosting its third and final free eco-film series by exploring food waste at Carco Theater this Thursday, the 16th, at 6:00 PM. And at 7:30 PM, we have a chef, Terry Rutterow, I hope I'm saying that right, from Seattle's Lulay and Luke Restaurants, is gonna share his tips and tricks on reducing food waste. So folks interested in that can show up at 6:00 PM on November 16th, or they can contact us at 430-7391 and get more information. I just want to also remind folks, as part of our contract with our solid waste provider, our clean sweep program is in effect a little differently than, instead of having a single weekend where we do that, folks can call and schedule their own time when they want to do their own sort of private clean sweep for the garbage provider to come and pick up additional materials from their home. They have through Friday, the 29th, to do that at no additional charge. So if you'd like to do that, please, you can call us, or call, excuse me, call Republic Services at 206-777-6440. That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, next up is audience comment. When I call your name, please step up to the podium. You'll have five minutes to speak, and please state your name and your city of residence. So first up is Adria Krail.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you so much for hearing me. I'm here as a citizen concerned about the availability of the facilities that are used for recreation and the loss of funds to the community. Approximately eight weeks ago, I went down to the community center to speak with them in regard to our daughter getting married. She is getting married next year. Her wish is to get married on Halloween, which I'm a fan of, as Carol Limicino is. I'm very into Halloween, so Mother's Joy. Well, that's on Wednesday. So I went down eight weeks ago, they said you cannot reserve anything for 12 months in advance. So last week, I called to make those reservations, and I was told I cannot make those reservations for a Tuesday, Wednesday, and a Thursday. Because it is Halloween, it is going to be decorated, not disgusting things, but elegant, but haunted-housey. And being that, you know, if your daughter gets married on a Wednesday, you don't want to be running around doing all the decor, so we were asking to rent it on Tuesday to do the setup, and then Wednesday for the ceremony, and I'm very Renton-centric. I wanted the Renton Technical College to cater it, because I believe in their program and being able to contribute to the city. I was blatantly told by Shirley, no. And I asked why, and she says, "Because we don't know what's gonna be on the calendar next year." And I said, "By a Georgia facility, eight weeks ago, was told that I couldn't do it a year in advance, so I had to wait until after, for October, or November 1st, excuse me." And she said, "We don't do it that far in advance." She said, "We go by the what's happening." So in doing the research, I looked on it, and there's no limitation to saying that they're not doing it a year in advance. And as you can see, I pulled up the what's happening, well, actually, the lovely gentleman over here helped me, and it talks about the fall hours on the facility locations, Renton Community Center, and it says, "Fall hours, September through December, Monday through Thursday, or 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM." And then it's closed for a few days for holidays. It does not talk about exclusions. If you go into it further, I researched it online, and it said that if there are during the week, it is a minimum of three hours, and it's with, there can be some exceptions. I asked her, I said, "Well, I do not understand, if I'm willing to pay eighty-five dollars an hour for the 10 hours of the operation of the facility for Tuesday and for Wednesday, and we were hoping to do breakdown on Thursday, but if we must, we would be doing breakdown on Wednesday evening after the wedding, it's hopefully a 5:00 wedding. We know it's during the week, we're not making it long." She said, "No." And I said, "You know, I'm kind of concerned, because I've attended funeral services midweek in July, right after the Fourth of July, and in the midweek in October in that facility." And she said, "Well, those are, you know, exceptions." And I said, "But I'm asking a year in advance. Obviously, nobody plans for passing." I then called Kelly, and, or I spoke with Kelly, got nowhere. I then spoke with Kim, got nowhere. I have left three messages for Mike Kerr. He has not called me back. My concern as a resident is, I looked, and there are some yoga, there's a yoga class on Tuesday at 5:30 to 6:30, and there is one other class on Wednesday at 5:30 to 6:30. They only get five dollars per person. I'm willing to pay eighty-five dollars an hour, or ten dollars, for 10 hours, for three consecutive days. So you're making fifty dollars, sixty dollars. I doubt anybody's gonna be there on Halloween with their kids in the evening, and on Thursday, I didn't see anything in the evening. So fiscally, I feel that it's not a very responsible choice on the facility's management to say that they'd rather take fifty dollars, and they said they have nothing on the books for next year, they have nothing scheduled, they don't know what their schedule is, but they absolutely refuse, unless I wanted to do it on a Friday or Saturday. I'm coming to you as a resident because you don't micromanage this, and this is something that I feel is very important, because economics and being able to keep our community going, especially the community centers, the youth centers, Henry Moses, all of those things, we need to be able to have the most economic logic. And I don't find economic logic in saying, "I'm not gonna take eighty-five dollars an hour from you for 10 hours, but I'll take five dollars for 10 people." I need your help. I don't understand it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And you're right, we don't micromanage it, and actually, the council doesn't manage it at all, but we will definitely pass this information off to the administration for review, and we'll find out the answer when it gets back to us.
Do you have any recommendations on how I can, I mean, I've, the reason I came here is I was forced to, because I did call up and up and up and up, and there was no logic to it.
If you leave your information, somebody will get back to you.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I believe it's on the sign-up thingy. Do you need any more information from me?
Yes, we have your information.
All right, I thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
And travel safely this evening home.
Thanks, thank you. Okay, next up is Howard McComber.
Howard McComber, live in Renton. I came last week, I'm coming back this week, 'cause the weather's even worse. And our needs are great. Right now, we have a tremendous need for people to bring food items, actually, to the Center of Hope. We're looking for anything having to do with protein, such as meat, or peanut butter, or that sort of stuff. We're just, everybody's shy, but right now, this is pretty tough. And so we're looking for it, so anybody who'd like to, you can contact the Center of Hope, you can bring it down. We have room downstairs now. We need, we need supplies, and I just thought I'd come and ask that. The second thing is just perhaps a chance for you folks to consider, I know when the temperature goes down below 32 for, you know, for three days, you can open the cold weather shelter, but I think sometimes we can have extreme weather, like we're about to have or we're having now, where maybe we could have it so that the city can call it open when things are tough and provide shelters, because nobody's sleeping out there. They're out there, but there, no one's sleeping in that. And that driving rain and the wind and the scary stuff out there is not good. So just looking for compassion. Thank you.
Thank you, Howard. Okay, we have eight items on the consent agenda. Are there any that somebody would like polled?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move we adopt the consent agenda as published.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Mr. Corman, that we adopt the consent agenda as published. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, on to unfinished business. Mr. Corman.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have three public safety committee reports to present.
Okay, Public Safety Committee reports, Police Department reorganization. The Public Safety Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the reorganization of the police department by eliminating a commander position and adding a second deputy chief position. This is signed by the committee chair and a member.
Move the council concur in the committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Corman, seconded by Mr. Prince, that they concur with the committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, the next report is regarding non-commissioned employee recruitment bonus. The Public Safety Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the recruitment bonus for non-commissioned employees who successfully recruit either a lateral police officer or experienced non-commissioned staff member. This is signed by the committee chair and member.
Move the council concur in the committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, seconded by Mr. Prince, that the council concur with the committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, the final public safety report is regarding vehicle impoundment code amendment. The Public Safety Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve amending Renton Municipal Code 10-5 Vehicle Impoundment to align Renton Municipal Code to state law and assign post-impoundment jurisdiction from the city hearing examiner to the Renton Municipal Court. This is signed by the committee chair and member.
Move the council concur in the committee report.
Second.
The move by Mr. Corman, seconded by Mr. Prince, that the council concur with the committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that's all.
Okay, on to Ms. Switchy.
No, no, Mr. Prince.
Mr. Prince.
Planning and Development.
Plan Development Committee has a couple of committee reports.
Okay, Planning and Development Committee report, 2017 Long Range Planning Fall Work Program. The Planning and Development Committee concurs with the staff and planning commission recommendation to adopt the code changes included in the 2017 Long Range Planning Fall Work Program. The Planning and Development Committee further recommends that ordinances for the following items be prepared and presented for first reading when they are complete. Non-conforming development standards, final plat authority, text amendment exemptions, group homes, and administrative code interpretations. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move that the council concur with the recommendation of the Plan Development Committee.
Second.
Been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Mr. Corman, that the council concur with the committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, the next report is regarding supervised injection facilities. The Planning and Development Committee has considered all the information contained within the record for supervised injection facilities, including the planning commission's recommendation and the Community and Economic Development Department staff's recommendation to prohibit supervised injection facilities, AKA, community health engagement locations. Based on this information, the Planning and Development Committee recommends that an ordinance prohibiting supervised injection facilities be prepared and presented for first reading when it is complete. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move that the council concur with the Plan Development Committee committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Mr. Corman, that the council concur with the Planning and Development Committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, the final Planning and Development Committee report is regarding landmark designation nomination for the Cortona Building. The Planning and Development Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to confirm mayor law's request to proceed with the nomination of the Cortona Building for landmark designation and confirm mayor law's appointment of Ms. Liz Stewart, Renton History Museum Manager, to King County Landmarks Commission as a special member for a three-year term. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move that the council concur in the recommendation of the Plan Development Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Mr. Corman, that the council concur with the Planning and Development Committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we're on to Ms. Switchy.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. McGurven.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Utilities Committee has two committee reports to present.
Okay, the Utilities Committee committee report, the first is latecomers agreement request for the, from Low Income Housing Institute for the Renton Commons Project. The Utilities Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to grant preliminary approval of the application for a latecomers agreement request for the Low Income Housing Institute, also known as the Renton Commons LLC petitioners, for a period of two years. The application for a latecomers agreement was submitted to recover a portion of the $238,147.51 estimated cost of a water main extension along Whitworth Avenue South to the south margin of the City of Seattle Cedar River Pipeline right-of-way required for the Renton Commons development at 215 Whitworth Avenue South, so that adjacent properties will be required to share in the cost of the water main at such time that they benefit from the water main. The committee further recommends that council authorize a preliminary assessment rule to be forwarded to the city clerk, who will notify the affected property owners. If no protests are received, after construction of the facilities and approval of the final costs, the council can authorize preparation of the final assessment rule and latecomer agreement. In the event there is a protest for valid cause, a public hearing will be held to resolve any issues prior to proceeding with this matter. This is signed by the committee chair and a member.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. McGurven.
I move that the council concur with the recommendation of the Utilities Committee.
Second.
Been moved by Mr. McGurven, seconded by Mr. Corman, that the council concur with the Utility Committee committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, the final Utilities Committee report is regarding a 2017 through 2019 biennial water quality, stormwater capacity grant. The Utilities Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the Water Quality Stormwater Capacity 17 through 19 Agreement between the Washington State Department Ecology and the City of Renton to provide up to $50,000 in non-matching funds to assist the city in complying with the requirements of the Western Washington Phase II Municipal Stormwater Permit and approve the requested appropriation of funds to surface water utility accounts. This is signed by the committee chair and member.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. McGurven.
I move that the council concur with the Utilities Committee committee report.
Second.
Been moved by Mr. McGurven, seconded by Mr. Corman, that the council concur with the Utility Committee committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, next up, we have legislation. We have two resolutions and five ordinances.
Okay, the first resolution is for adoption, is regarding the Renton Regional Fire Authority inter-local agreement. A resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an inter-local agreement with the Renton Regional Fire Authority to identify the process for the collection, distribution, and expenditure of fire impact fees.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move the resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
Been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Mr. Corman, that the resolution be adopted as read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution passes.
Okay, the second resolution is regarding the amended 2017-2018 fee schedule. A resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, adopting the amended 2017-2018 City of Renton fee schedule.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move the resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Mr. Corman, that the resolution be adopted as read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution passes.
Okay, we have one ordinance for first reading regarding vehicle impounds. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending Chapter 10-5 of the Renton Municipal Code, clarifying impoundment and redemption of vehicle regulations, designating the Renton Municipal Court as the post-impoundment hearing venue, and providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corman.
I move the ordinance be placed on second, final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, seconded by Mr. Prince, that the ordinance be put on the, on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passes.
Okay, the next four ordinances are for second and final reading. The first is regarding a franchise agreement with XO Communication Services. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, granting onto XO Communication Services LLC, a limited liability company registered in the state of Delaware, authorized to do business within the state of Washington. Its affiliates, successors, and assigns the right privilege and authority to install communication facilities, specifically fiber optic cable and related appendices, under along, over, below, through, and across the streets, avenues, and alleys of the City of Renton within the public right-of-way of Renton.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. McGurven.
I move that the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. McGurven, seconded by Mr. Corman, that the ordinance be adopted as read, and this requires a roll call.
Hey, Mr. Pavoni.
Aye.
Mr. Corman.
Aye.
Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Ms. Switchy.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. McGurven?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
Okay.
All ayes, yeah.
All ordinance passes.
Okay. All right, the next ordinance is regarding the two thousand eighteen property tax. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, establishing the property tax levy for the year two thousand eighteen for general city operational purposes in the amount of nineteen million, four hundred thousand dollars.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Prince?
I move the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Mr. Corman, that the ordinance be adopted as read. This requires a roll call.
Hey, Mr. Pavoni?
Aye.
Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Ms. Witchy?
Aye.
Mr. McGurven?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
Okay, the ordinance passes.
Okay, the next ordinance is the mid-biennial budget amendment. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending the City of Renton fiscal years two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen biennial budget as adopted by ordinance number fifty-eight-twenty-four, and thereafter amended by ordinance numbers fifty-eight-thirty-five and fifty-eight-fifty in the amount of fourteen million, three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and ninety-four dollars.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Prince?
I move the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
Been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Mr. Corman, that the ordinance be adopted as read. This requires a roll call.
Hey, Mr. Pavoni?
Aye.
Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Ms. Witchy?
Aye.
Mr. McGurven?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
Ordinance passes.
Okay, the final ordinance is regarding amending city code for fire protection impact fees. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending section four-dash-one-dash-one-ninety of the Renton Municipal Code by amending fire protection impact fee regulations and providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
Move the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, seconded by Mr. Prince, that the ordinance be adopted as read. This requires a roll call.
Hey, Mr. Pavoni?
Aye.
Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Ms. Witchy?
Aye.
Mr. McGurven?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
Ordinance passes. Okay, we're on to new business. Mr. Corman?
Uh, no new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Prince?
I've got quite a few new business items to announce. This Thursday at four P.M. in the council conference room, the Planning and Development Committee will be meeting. We have two items on the agenda, downtown civic core vision and action plan, and emerging issues in CED.